Go ahead and get started messaging, I mean Slack or something separate, so he should be here any minute. Amit, how are you doing there? Do you wanna start us off, please?
Uh, yes, John. So first thing today, I have a small task like this notification body was incorrect. Like it was not grouping correctly. Someone join the group, okay? So while we do testing with Todd, so we find it like when you and me joined, it was saying that John, Amit, John comma Amit join the group. It should say John and Amit, then after like three people, so let me send a screen. Hmm, so this now things like earlier, it was saying, uh, yeah. So it was a problem Jenny and Kelly join the group.
Okay.
And we formatted it like not Jenny and Kelly join the group. If only two person will be there. If there be three Jenny, Kelly and Tom join the group, it will say no.
Got it. Okay, so if it's more than two people, it'll still be John comma Kelly.
Yes.
Don't really need the comment after the second name.
Uh, let me take, I think, uh, it's just not common there. It is common there, it might be.
Let me one, give me one.
Okay.
Uh, yes, it is common there, so I will remove that. So remove comma, right?
After the second name.
Yeah, second name, okay. So that, yeah, so. Well, that, that is in QA currently, not in production. After that, like, uh, we probably talk about, we will batch, uh, the large group message notification, right?
Uh, which large group message notification?
Suppose some, some people continuously sending message and people are missing the notification, so we will delay like same thing. We batch, suppose we are in the group and more than, uh, same time people are sending messages, so we will cover that, right?
Are we saying from, uh, all from the same person or from multiple people?
Multiple people.
Okay, so five people send five messages at the same time, what happens?
So currently I just, uh, implemented not reply anywhere, not, not just that, I thought, like, I talked with Jerry also. So like I, like currently within ten seconds, if, uh, ten people send the message, so same like we'll see. John, Amit and three more people send a message in the group name.
I think, um. The time shouldn't be ten seconds, I guess too long, cuz. Messages come in fast, it's good to see them coming in within few seconds, but I, I think if like five people sent them within like two seconds.
Two second, okay, then, yeah, like I talked.
Real quick though, that means, so that means every single message will be delayed two seconds.
Yes, not like every single we have it here, like I talked with Jerry just now. So he told me, uh, we will only batch those group notification, which has like active members, like, uh. People are frequently sending message, right Jerry?
Brad, we, we wanna make sure that the inactive groups could get instant notifications, but not the ones that are very active. We might wanna consider batching those.
I see. Hmm, okay.
So can I proceed with it? Uh, like, uh, we cannot, like, what is your thoughts on here?
Yeah, so that means in active groups, Jerry, that means every message will be delayed, let's say two seconds if we pick that as the.
Two seconds seems a bit too much, like a bit too little to delay it.
But then every message will be delayed then, right?
It's hard to determine, we, we're gonna have to figure out a good, a good way to say, okay, we're gonna start limiting messages.
Cause two seconds is a long time if, if it's really active, let's say there's thousands and thousands of people.
Yeah, so let's say there's maybe. Uh, if we find that multiple messages are, let's say multiple messages were sent, more than two messages were sent in the past. Uh, two seconds or pa- past three seconds, like the first message. Like, let's say it goes a couple minutes of inactivity, the first message would be instant. Then once we identify that this message was sent within. Two minutes or nothing two minutes, uh, like two seconds of the previous message, then we maybe start the, the batch countdown.
I see, it'll be triggered.
So like, yeah, the first message after some inactivity, that, that's always instant.
I'm trying to think if, um. Like in a real world, like what's most likely to happen? Does it trigger make sense? Does it, is there a pattern there? Uh, I'd have to think about that a little bit. Or like, cuz I was thinking if, if it was always batched everything, but the delay was very small, even one second. Cuz there could conceivably be a time where one hundred messages gets sent within one second.
Now, I don't think we're at that right now, though. If we do, if we do like five seconds, the one second would be covered.
But every message will be delayed five seconds.
Hmm, no, we would, the idea is, is that we would not delay the first message, it would be once we identify.
Every message after that would be, I mean, I guess the one. Well, I don't know, and then after five seconds, it sends the batch, so. So the one that was sent four seconds later wasn't delayed five seconds. I guess, but the first few, the fir- like the first of any re- repeat, like as soon as the trigger starts. The next message will be delayed five seconds, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a long delay, two seconds not bad, two seconds is like imperceptible, cuz you don't know.
Well, you're saying it would be a long delay, but they already got a message, like they already saw a message.
Only not.
Oh, are we not talking about no messages or notifications?
Notification, message will be on real time.
Yeah, messages will always be real time, notification, sorry.
Oh, Amit, I think he said messages.
That's why, so notification, okay.
Yeah, that's where I was confused, okay, so. I see, yeah, that's different, notifications is different. Okay, so wait, we're already doing this, though, we're doing it with the reactions.
Yes, we are doing with the reactions and we are doing with someone join the group.
Yeah. And how, what's the delay?
So for reaction and someone join the group delays ten second.
Okay, okay. I think that's been working pretty well, too, you've noticed. What do you think Todd, have you been monitoring those, those batches of notifications?
Um, you know, I haven't really, or at least not noticed them.
But you caught the whole comma thing, like wasn't, right?
Oh, yeah, for sure, yes, 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 for sure.
So has it been, I mean, hasn't felt unnatural the way those got batched, right?
No, not at all.
Okay, yeah, not for me either.
In fact, it's like I don't even notice it, it's so natural, it's, you know?
Right, yeah, okay, good, that's kinda how I felt too, so I think it's doing a good job at the ten second, okay, so we would do the same. With a message notification, that's the idea?
Yes, yeah.
Hmm, okay, so then. Message notifications will be delayed.
But we will do for only those group which are regularly message are going on like.
Yeah. I see, I wish we could test it in QA, but it's kinda hard, cuz you need like a really active chat.
It's not reading, it's on like it feels a little bit tricky, so it will take time.
Yeah, okay, okay, well then, I guess we can test it. Is this something we could turn on and off?
Yeah, you can do it.
Okay.
Like we can, we can make it as configurable then.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe test it for like thirty minutes, if we don't like it, turn it off.
Hmm.
Right, would that be possible?
Yeah, it will, it will be possible, Jerry, I think it will be possible, what I will do, I will, I will read it from the properties, finally, if it is true, then I'll do only those things, otherwise we make.
Okay. Okay, that's good, then I guess we don't have too much risk, so. Okay, all right, thank you, Amit, what else you have going on? Okay, thank you, um, Jerry, why don't you go next?
Yeah, let me get something like a little demo. Um, we just added some more moderation stuff for like, uh, adding and removing group members, adding in logging for that. And we are, what we wanna do is we wanna start to build on the warning stuff. And let me get to, hope all this is into production right now, so. Okay. I just spin up a. Yep, so. I can go here, now this is just the, um. This is just an example, uh, but what you can see here is where did my tab go? I literally just had it and now it's gone, okay, tab, circles, okay. So, we have a, what I'm calling an admin chat, but what we're doing is this is just going, right now, this is just reflecting circles buddy. But if I wanted to do John Worthington and.
So that goes to circles buddy chat or the?
The coast of circles, but well, right now this is circles buddy, we can.
The message, that's cool, so that's from circles buddy.
Right, so now, um, so go ahead and respond back to circles buddy. Wow. So this is just a very light chat interface, and what we wanna do this for is this is gonna be automated, that whenever you send a warning. About like somebody misbehaving in a chat, they're gonna get a message from this account, but we were kind of. Uh, we kind of were all in agreeance yesterday that there should not be circles buddy that it comes from. But what should we call the special account that only gets used when we have to say you're not acting nice?
I don't know, maybe, um, circle moderator.
Hmm, yeah.
Circle admin, it's kind of short word.
Okay, and if we have like, um, like an icon that we wanted to use for it?
Yeah, um. I could think of a few things, let me, yeah, let me think about that.
Okay, so, yeah, I kinda spent yesterday kinda building up this page and building up this tab. And what I'm gonna do next is I'm gonna tap, tie it into the warn feature in the chat admin.
Okay.
So that when you tap warn, it's gonna say, you know. You've been warned, um, you know, behave better, and anytime they send you messages. Um, what I have a question is, so if somebody sends a message to this account. You know, nobody's gonna be monitoring this, but could we, would you, would you like maybe a, um, an email to go out?
Yeah, we can email would be ideal.
Okay, so if an email goes out for, email will go out to whom?
Um, like the normal distribution of our like info, like I think Chantel, Todd, Danny.
Okay, got it, I'll just send it to info at circles then.
Okay, cool.
Uh, yep, they have this, we're gonna tie it into the chat admin and we're going to actually get some stuff going.
Okay, nice.
So. That took up most of my time yesterday.
There, there was a unusual case where a topic got removed and then a message came in. Because the topic had still, you know, been on, sitting on someone's phone, so the topic kinda resurrected, did you, did you look into that?
So, yes, I understand why is because we don't delete the topic, we just delete all the messages in topic. But they were able to access it by clicking a notification for a message that led them into that topic. And then when they sent a message, it just recreated the topic, because right now, um.
I think that's one way you could recreate it, I think another way is, if let's say all of us on this call are in a topic. And you delete it, but I'm still in it, I could just send a message again.
Yep, uh, so what I can do is for custom topics, I can just, if custom topic has no messages. I can just completely lock it down.
That's what I think it needs to be, have we done that yet?
No, but I can.
Okay, so. When you say custom topic, you mean any topic, right?
Um, a custom topic would probably be best, because what if you, you could reshare like a profile?
Yes, true.
So, uh, you could, you could share a profile and it could create a new topic, but the way that our topics work, that if it were a custom topic. If you locked it once everything was cleared, then it couldn't be recreated.
Maybe we don't care, uh, maybe, you know, if it gets deleted, we don't want it to be reshared, I mean, I don't know, let's.
No, if it's a profile, uh, maybe not.
Hmm. Hmm, so someone would tap the notification and they would get, they would see the topic, but it would be empty and they would not be able to message in it.
It would be empty and right now, if they send a message to it, it would, um, like if, after they do this, it would look like they sent the message. But it wouldn't send because it's locked, and then that's something that we'd want, um. Some things we'd wanna hide, we would wanna lock the message and put on some topics, and I think that's something that just balance Chantel, they already talked about yesterday. Is that I'll have to pass a new configuration that some topics are just locked and nobody can message into it.
That's one nice feature, but, um, what I'm thinking is. It will never really, like, okay, if we're all on this call and we're all in a custom topic and you delete it. But a couple of us have it open in the foreground, and then we send a message, even if the message is locked. It's like still surviving, the topic's still being on my screen.
Well, if, well, after the pain I'm saying, it just won't, it won't survive, it just, the message will just be fired into the void and will never be created.
But the topic itself, like it would be deleted from your phone, it would be deleted from some other phones if they left. Right, and came back. Um. But then. What if I keep messaging into it? There won't be a notification or anything, right?
No notification, it's going to live for as long as you stay on that screen, but you're not gonna be able to send messages to it.
So as soon as I leave and come back, it'll be gone for me too.
Right.
So it will eventually disappear from every phone.
Right, the only way that we could do what you're saying is almost a subscription for when a topic gets deleted.
Yeah.
A topic that, and then again, we'd have to recheck and make sure that topic gets deleted. And we'd have to like navigate somebody back to the main chat and they unbackground it and they were in a deleted topic, there, there's a lot of checks you'd have to add into there.
Yeah, yeah, the short, easier way.
The short route is just like backend check, topic delete it, don't allow any new messages.
Yeah, and then it will eventually remove it, it'll be gone from everywhere.
Right.
Okay, okay, let's do that.
Uh, one thing, though, that this won't prevent, and that this may require some. Uh, I, I don't know what the proper way to process this, but this won't stop anybody from recreating a custom topic.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind, that if there, if there is something that somebody deletes a custom topic, uh, somebody could just go ahead and spin it back up.
We probably should have an admin permission then for, um, only admins can make custom topics.
In certain groups, yeah.
In certain groups, yeah.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay, could, who would work on that?
Uh, I guess it's chat, I can work with this mail on it, but we need backend support as well.
Maybe Amit could do some, so all three of you basically?
Uh, it's gonna need new database fields, so, yeah.
Okay, this isn't something I odd would have worked on at all?
No, cuz it's gonna requi- it's gonna require, it's gonna require the front end to, it's like, like, respect these permissions.
Okay.
So I odd could work on, you know, marking chats as only admin can create topics. But it's still, you know, each level has to add their own support.
Okay. Okay. Um.
You wanna move forward with that? I'll add it to my list today.
Yeah, let's add it to the list, I don't know that it's like the top priority, but, um. If, if every, if it's, if we're available capacity, let's do it.
Sweet, okay, yeah, only other thing I was working on, thought I'd be able to do today was our SoundCloud integration.
Oh, yeah.
I sent a, a request for API keys to SoundCloud and they just said, hey, your account's too, let me read their email.
Okay.
They're like, your account's too new, we're not letting you, so, let's see.
I wonder if we have an older one, maybe like. Someone else on our team.
That's what I was gonna ask, thank you for interest in using our public APIs, due to a high number of spammers trying to get access and abuse our APIs. We decided to no longer grant API access to very new or inactive accounts. You can do the following to mitigate this, if this is a new account for developing. You can send us a link to a different, more active account that you own, we need both the account URL and the associated email address. It include, it should include items such as comments, playlists, followed artists or uploaded tracks. If you just started on SoundCloud, go ahead for a while, like some tracks, create a playlist, comment on the track or even upload your first track. After that, reach, reach back out to us, and then we'll see that your account is used with genuine intention and we will grant API access.
Okay, does anyone here have a SoundCloud account?
That they actually use.
Yeah, let me ask Ian as well.
I have one. I have an old one from like twenty ten.
And this is a really, this is a really weird question they have next, I just realized. Once you are ready to proceed, can you also please explain what your ideas for monetization of your app are?
Interesting.
That's, that's a very random question they have involved.
Um, well, we can just say we're giving this away for free.
Yeah.
That's an easy answer, we're not, we're not charging for it. Cuz they, I know if, like, obviously for charging and making money, that's so much.
Yeah, but it's not, it's all free right now.
Yeah. That's easy enough, um. Yeah, I was messaging Ian. One sec. I mean, do you have an active SoundCloud account?
No, I don't.
John, I do.
Oh, you do, Todd, okay.
Yeah, I do.
I didn't hear you, okay, so then, Jer- Jerry, can you and Todd work together on that?
Um.
Cuz you just, you just cast the link, like just say he's a developer is all.
Todd, can you send me your, I need your SoundCloud username and your email address associated with it, and when is the last time that you used it?
I mean, I'm logging into it right now.
Plus, you have activity on it, like, did you follow the playlist?
Yeah, I think so, probably the last week or so, I'm.
Okay, sure, I think that's fine for him.
Yes, yeah, it's not like ten years, like you haven't had.
Right, no, 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 definitely not.
Cool.
Yeah, I'll give that to you, Jerry.
Okay, sweet, um, I'll give that to him, hopefully it works.
Excellent.
Thanks, Todd.
And, uh. Sweet, I'll be able to work on that today and also this mail, looks like you want some new fields added to some topic APIs, so, uh. All of that on my plate.
Okay, cool, yeah, let's get this mails, uh, thank you, Jerry, it's, why don't you, uh, update, is that real gap regarding what I was messaging this morning?
Sorry, what was that last thing you said?
The API fields you need from Jerry, is that about the topic, custom topic issue?
Oh, uh, kinda, it's just, it's, it's, I'm getting cache errors when, um. When topics are coming in through the subscription, because it's missing a field. That we added for tagging, remember if we, we blocked tagging for topics, so that's a new field that is added to topics, now the, the subscription has to have the same field. So that when the cache updates, it has all the right fields. Uh, so that was just that, like, uh, it's not necessarily connected, but in a way it is, when you refresh or renew whatever, any cache update, you, you wanna make sure you have. All the fields in sync.
Hmm.
Um, so, yes and no, but, yeah, um, other than that, um.
But you're saying it, it is, there is some relation then to what?
It's, it's kinda related to updating topics in general, not to that specific problem, no.
But it'll solve that.
It's not a solution for that problem, it's just to, to make sure our connection is updated properly, so we don't have any problems down the line.
I see, so how will you solve the other problem?
I'm still looking into that, I'm looking into the code to find that refresh logic, I wanna see, it, it's hard to, it's hard to do it on my. On my emulator, because. You honestly put the app in the background and stay subscribed, like it doesn't actually disconnect, which. Means we can't recreate this scenario you were in where you were unsubscribed. But the app wasn't fully closed.
Yeah, how do you know I was unsubscribe?
Because if you go into the background for more than like, I think, five to ten seconds, it unsubscribes, but the app doesn't close. So, so it won't refetch the APIs. Or, or it won't call a new API, but it also, the subscription wasn't working, so you don't get either. And that's why I added logic to when you, as soon as you open the app, it does a refetch. So if you missed anything, it can get you the information. Um. Which I thought was working, so I guess we need to do more testing there. The thing is with my emulator, if I put it in the background for an hour, it would stay subscribed, it won't, it would never unsubscribe.
Hmm, right.
So that's the only tricky part about testing these things. Um, but yeah, I'm still looking into that. Uh, yeah, and other than that, yesterday, we, uh, just a quick update, so kind of all. Uh, I mean, told me that there was a problem sharing profiles and it was due to that same ca- cash issue. We were talking about, but it was, that one was when we created a topic manually, so I had to manually insert tagging enabled false. Um, so that's been fixed, it should be, it's part of the new build, so now you can share topics, our profiles and topics, yeah. Um.
And when you say all, do you mean user profiles or place profiles or?
All topics for not working.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
You couldn't share any profiles into topics?
Correct.
I see, okay.
Yeah, and it was because of that fact, uh, but it was, so some of these stuff. Like if it's a subscription, the backend has to give me it, but if, if we're creating a new topic from scratch ourselves, we have to add it manually, so that was the one where we had to add it manually. And now the other one is I'm talking to Jerry's work, the backend part, so that we don't run into more problems like, like that one.
Okay.
Uh, and then there was, um. Uh, what was it? Oh, yeah, I made the share profile only visible on your. Or like your account and not other people and you visit their profile.
Okay.
And, um, there's a problem with the, what's it called, when you submit a. When you submit a, a unlisted service.
Hmm.
Um, it was not a, it was kind of the way it worked, if you click submit while the keyboard is up, it would, that first submit click would dis- disable the keyboard, but it won't actually register the button click. And then you have to click it again. And then it would submit it, so I think, um, Chantel showed me a screen record of one of the investors having problem adding. Um. Unless the server's because of that, I think she was confused, cuz she was like she clicked so the keyboard highs, she thought she submitted it, and then she goes, she edits the field again, which. Brings the keyboard up again, and now she's stuck in that loop without knowing it.
Uh, I see. How do we?
I made it where if you click anywhere, it disconnects the keyboard, but if you click on that button itself, it actually doesn't connect, it doesn't dismiss the keyboard. Um. So that way, it, cuz it, after you click the button, it's gonna navigate you anyway, so there's no need to dismiss the keyboard, um, I can add one extra line to make it dismiss after submissions, but, uh. Yeah, I don't think it's necessary, it's gonna. Do that anyways, uh, which was, which was, which this I thought would be okay. Uh, which was, which was, which this app I would be off at quick fix, but I actually ended up taking quite a. Quite a bit of time because we had two, like it was a nested scroll, if you remember that screen. And I was handling it from one place. I was like, why is it not working? And then I learned that the parent is also a scrollable view. So I had to handle it on, on both parent and child. But it took me a while to figure out that both had different scrolls because you won't know that by using the app. Um. But other than that, let me see, is there anything else? Yeah, I think that's pretty much. Uh, so we had a build out forty-five, which I think should be um, ready. Um, in terms of all the bugs should be resolved and the Android one, I mean fixed. So yeah, I think we should be good to go. Um, unless, if, I don't know if Q A got a chance to play with that build yet.
I've been playing with the um, Todd and Chantel, do you guys have it on Android in latest build fifty-three, right?
Correct.
I do not, but I will get that on right now.
Yeah, I have built fifty-three.
Seems like it's working real well for me.
Yeah, so far for me as well. It's left a bit more testing to do, but so far so good.
I haven't tested anything with the tagging photos. Um, that's, is that in here?
Yeah, it should be in there.
Right now?
Yeah. Uh, you guys are breaking out.
Yeah, we test that out, Todd. Can you hear me right?
No, no problem. You got it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Um.
So that being said, I'm looking into that refresh problem. Um. Like I said, it's still a tricky because I can't test on my emulator. So I wanna see if I run a local build on my. Phone, would it actually unsubscribe? Or is it because if it's running off of Metro, it won't do that? So I need to kinda know that and then I'll go from there in terms of just trying to find a solution that can actually work and be tested live. Uh, but other than that, yeah. Uh, lots going on.
Let me um, let me send a screenshot of what um, this looks like in. This is in the development channel, this mail and Jerry, why don't you look at this too? Um, when I tap on the club, club photos. Topic goes in a test of tagging. This happens in a lot of like, it's still, uh, I'm still on the screen in the app. I haven't scrolled or anything. But um, it is not showing. The images.
I'm seeing the same thing, John, on Android.
Uh, okay. Yeah, they're all actually all missing now. But if I scroll, then they start popping in. But actually the ones on the bottom are still not popped in.
Whatever it's trying to populate from the earliest to the latest. So am I? Is it impossible? No.
She's probably shows.
It shows the ones up higher, but the five on the bottom, six, seven, eight, I'm not seeing, actually I think.
I'm in that right now. All the images are like very slowly loading in.
Yeah, and I'm not even, I'm still don't have the first seven. Why? Why is that?
I think this mail might wanna check this and I think it may be if that.
Yeah, um. Actually, well, I need to recreate it first. So I think I have to find a group that.
So just go, just set your environment to production on that. Send your environment to production, just go in that guest list topic.
Okay, is that a public group?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Uh, let me try that then.
Yeah, there's just so many images. We should have some kind of pull loader or something on here.
But I thought it paginates.
Yeah, thirty at a time.
Thirty. Um, something's. It's more than just it being too many images because I still don't have the first seven. It's been like a few minutes.
Same, same for me. Exact same situation.
Okay, you don't have the first seven?
That is correct.
Right. Okay. So there's something else going on there, Jerry. Him, I'm suspecting more than just the front end.
Yeah, I'll see if I could find him on Cloudinary.
Yeah, actually, when I tap on the empty space, there's no image there. It's just a heart loader.
Are you able to download the image, John?
I haven't tried. Are you?
Bye. Um, it says it completed. I'm looking for it right now. Yeah, I downloaded it and it's just like a, a, a. A blank uh, image.
They're downloading for me.
Okay, the first seven are not there. I hit the download button. I don't have anything.
No. Mine's downloaded, but it gave me like this, you know, it just had like a little weird picture icon to say that the image isn't there.
Oh, wait. One of these is, okay, some of these are having a four hundred error, but uh, we'll figure it out. Um, oh, the watermark? Why did the watermark give these an error? Oh, boy. But not the others. Interesting.
Weird.
Have to piece apart that URL. There's no change between that and the other. Oh.
Yeah, I think it's a backend problem, Jerry, because they're not loading at all.
It's with the URL. What's that? It's with the URL. The watermark, the URL you're saying, or you're asking? No, I'm, I'm stating. So I, I need to see what changed because nothing changed to my knowledge on that.
Take a look at that. Okay, and then Todd, test the tagging and whatnot.
Yeah, we'll do.
Okay. Okay, um. Was there anything more, Ismail?
No.
Okay. Alrighty then, um, I mean, let's get your update, please. I mean, are you there? I mean, hello? Alright, let's wait for Amin and then I'll go to Wells for now. Wells, can we get your update, please?
Yeah, sure, we can. Um. Uh, right now I was working on analytics for um. Setting some information in the user properties. Then he asked for me to have the. The reward level of the user in amplitude. And while they can look at it, I, I figured we could also have other information. So I am talking to Danny. He's got a line right now, but I'm slacking him. Uh, regarding whether or not we will want uh, all your information that might be useful. So for example, how many. Check links the user has in Dota, how many favorites, how many followers, following friends and. And, and, and badges and received cares, given cares and other kind of things. So I provided a list of all this info to Danny and we will be setting that up for. Um, having these useful information pinned to the users and amplitude. Although I am having trouble testing it because amplitude um, is not letting me in. Right now it's back online. Okay. Awesome. So, yeah. And also I still have to implement the new statement. The new state manager that I mean just mentioned we should use for the badges navigation. Uh, I am implementing the. The badge navigation for when you click on um. Sorry, another badge mission. The levels animation for the, when you click on the task regarding the badges, you to be. Navigated to the home screen on the badges tab and perhaps scroll. Uh, to the tab, but right now I'm focusing only on, on, on navigating there. And I was using the state manager that we were using in the app, but it is no longer being maintained. So we have to start. Uh, creating new code in the new stuff that is going to be maintained. So that helps us having less stuff to refactor in the future. So that is still work in progress. And I believe that all the PRs that were open are merged. Yeah, all the PRs that were opened are merged. So everything regarding the winner circle should be uh, good. Uh, all the little tricks and, and stuff we, we have to, we had to, to work on there and, and edge cases. Should be right. For example, right now in smaller screens, the, the name of the winner. Of the winner circle should be above the, the rings of the second and the fifth user. Sure. Below. So the winner circle should be fine even in, in smaller screens. And also the flare order and everything else was merged already. And I was able to check that on, on current test flight. So everything seems to be fine regarding the, the winner circle. So I'll pass through that again. And then next, what I will be doing is. Um, working on the loading for that favorite uh, entertainment screen. Um, that had the little dog for showing when the user has no stuff instead of a loading, right? So I, I don't think there should be a problem right now because mainly circles user are in US, right? And in there, the app is so fast that there is no loading on the screen. But in case of me, for example, that I'm accessing from Brazil, there is a little bit of loading, as you saw in my emulator last time I presented the feature. So I will be working on, on setting up a loading there and, and making sure that, that the. The, the, the screen only shows a loading and not the message for like, hey, you don't have books. Why you, the, you load the information for the favorites in there. And I think those are my updates.
Okay, very good. You said you couldn't get into amplitude?
Uh.
You are able to or not able to?
Uh, can you repeat the question, please? I gotta get.
Are you not able to get into amplitude?
Uh, yeah, I couldn't. Um, I guess it was something regarding my, my VPN. I got in and out of it and amplitude was not letting me get to the, to the, to the website. But now apparently it is. So uh, let me see if I can sign in.
I, I got another development on these images. Holy moly, um.
We got.
These are some very high quality images.
Okay.
Yeah, um, apparently some of these images were uh, over fifty megabytes in size. Kind of crazy.
Right.
But um. I'm gonna see if there's, if I can like up it in Cloudinary to like the full hundred.
But well, what is, what happens if they tried to upload that into Slack? Like, what does Slack do? They, don't they downsize it on the way up?
Well, I mean, then if we downside, then if it's garbage in, it's garbage out.
Well. Fifty megabytes.
Fifty megabytes is crazy.
Yeah, I mean, if it went to twenty-five, how bad could it be? Twenty-five is like too big, right?
Yeah, let me just get this opened and maybe we could figure out what to do because I'd have to.
I mean, does that also explain why these images are taking so long to load?
Absolutely.
Right, okay. So we want good quality images, but they should be more like thumbnails when. When they're in the, in the scrolling chat. Maybe when I tap on it, I can see a more high resolution one.
Oh, so actually no, it's megapixels. It's not megabytes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, okay, that sounds better.
So that's not a crazy amount of mega pixels? I don't know. Is that a lot of mega pixels? I don't know.
That's just the profession we're taking photo.
So that shouldn't, shouldn't be a problem.
Right, that, that shouldn't be a problem. And I'm getting you the file size if I can get it. I don't know, actually I use some of these images. Yeah, it's just not letting me download it unless I go to Cloudinary and turn up the quota. Um.
Uh, that's, we can download it.
Yeah. Okay, so. Can we max some image? Um, I can. I can see what I can do to do this. We don't have to block anything.
Okay, um. Well. Okay, let me know when you're done because I had a couple other questions about that. But, but that's what I said though. If. If we're just talking about scrolling in the chat, those don't have to be the high resolution version. Are, are we doing anything to minimize those file sizes? Cause it should be, I, I think only high resolution when I tap on it.
Yeah, we see, we did that for uh, videos, I believe, but images. I can pass an image key from Cloudinary and then the front end can build out the URL. And then the front end can apply whatever transformations it wants. That's kind of what we did for video and it. Couldn't imagine that we'd be handling images this big.
Okay, so. What would the front end need to do?
Was, uh, well, I need to get the image keys. And it wants to, I have the image keys, then the front end and transform and manipulate those images however they'd like. It, so in other words, I have to like modify the output.
Okay, and then, and they. What were you gonna say, Todd?
I was gonna say, didn't we um. Do something, maybe this was just for storage on the backend, but didn't we do something recently to not. Um, or somehow reduce our i- image sizes or something, reduce the data bandwidth use. In circles, is that something different? Remember we were having those problems with a lot of data usage?
Yeah, I remember that too. That was around the time Ismail came back.
Yeah, so those are the images everywhere else in the app. But yeah, these, for the images that have been shared in chat. We've always stuck to sharing the full resolution image.
Oh, wow. Okay. I mean, I think John's right. We definitely should not be sharing the full. Image in the chat.
We're, we're going to have to create like a, almost like a thumbnail URL and then a full URL.
Yes, yes. I would say that's necessary.
Yes. Okay, we need to work on that.
Okay, and then you're saying it's a, it's a tag team, front and back end after.
Yes.
Work on it together. Okay. Will you work with Ismail on that when you're ready for his part?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, but in the meantime. Still figuring out why it didn't load, right?
No, it didn't load. It didn't load because it's past their megapixel quota.
Oh.
So I'm trying to figure out if there's a way that I can increase that quota or I can just update the URL to request a lower sized image.
Okay. Okay, let me know how that goes. Alright. I mean, were you able to uh, get your microphone working there?
I know it's working. It's, it was just when it was my time, uh, Google Meet decided to kick me out.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's get your update.
Yeah, so yeah, it's, it's by fixing uh, an Android crash was happening for the latest bill. And yeah, it seems because of the Snapchat share work that I did, that was only exclusively for iOS, but. Since it was only for iOS, it was like expecting it to be working on Android and one was causing a crash. The, the fix was simple. So I just like. Did the fix, we fixed crash. Um, also, yeah, Dennis and me like forwarded an email to me. I'm not sure if she's, is here, but like. Um, you forwarded me an email from, from Mapbox. They're like sending an email to like people that builds might not be working. They, they're having some issue with certificates and whatnot. And Danny forwarded me the email. Just wanted to, with you know, guys, that's, that's. It's not affecting us and we can be having built normally and we just did one yesterday. So.
Okay.
Yeah, that's like from one update. And also, so I'm not sure if you were about like the, the work that I was doing with the share interest. Exchange snapshot, like stories, like badges and, and favorites. And uh, I did it like I worked on it, but like we said, like we need to have links there. Uh, the thing is like we can't have links, like either like. Uh, the thing is, like, we can't have links, like, either like for Snapchat or Instagram, you can share a story, but you can't have a link going on there. Like, I did a research for Snapchat. It seems like, like, they were the winner first, then they stopped, like, you can be sharing links, and. Also felt like, um, uh, like a section somewhere in the documentation that. You can be requesting this to have the ability to show links, but you have to, uh. File a request and all of that to give approval. And, yeah, and we're still waiting on our, like, Snapchat ad to get approved, so we can start using it.
So we're first waiting for them to approve the creative kit, and then we stop the file. Another thing to see if we can get links?
Yes.
Okay. I see, so when, when did we submit for the creator kit approval?
I did, like, I did, I did find that, I guess.
Yeah, we did, we got rejected, um, and I was resubmitted, got rejected yesterday, and then I was resubmitted yesterday. Something to do with, um.
Safety.
Yes, yeah.
Safety issue, okay. So then, I mean, what's the process for applying for the links, like, is there?
Uh, I don't know, like, it was only like, a really like, a small paragraph, let me find it again, uh, I shared it. Somewhere. Where is it? Um, yeah, they say, uh, yeah, um, in creative kit, URL stickers are currently restricted. To unapproved allow list, to request access, please submit your app for review in the portal, that's what we're doing right now. And request this, this feature in the application, or con- contact us, contact us at Snapkit. Email, please note that access to this feature is, it's subject to approval by our team, so. There's not like a lot of process, this is just saying, email us, if you wanna.
Okay, can you send that to Todd?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the chat, uh.
Okay, so Todd, maybe, uh, you could also attempt that one. I wonder who gets approved. Cuz I know why they took it away. Because other apps are being able to. Get, um. Just basically, uh, kind of network for them. So I wonder who they do approve. You know, maybe they won't view us as. Like a big competitor and allow us, I don't know, who knows? We'll get a meeting with their CEO, talk to him. But. Yeah, let's start somewhere, Todd, with that process, let me know how it goes.
Yeah. I'm on it.
Okay, so where does that leave us, I mean, with the Snapchat stuff?
Uh, it's, uh, like, yeah, right now we're waiting for the app to get approval, so I can. We can at least, like, um, be able to share stories. Like, just, like badges as a story, like, we can do that right now, we just need the app to be approved. Um, so, the code is, everything is there.
Wasn't it working on Android?
No, it's not working, it does not work in Android too, like sharing, uh, badges, so sorry.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
Okay. Yeah, I see, we can share, um. Uh, a message, though, right? We can open, like, if I wanted to share a link into a message.
Yeah, that's, we, yeah, that's all we can do with iOS and Android, fine, yeah.
Okay, Todd, will you test that too, the sharing? So like, if you do, if you wanted to invite somebody, but invite them through Snapchat, we test that, and then invite them through Instagram, it should open mess, the DM.
Yeah, you got it, no problem.
Okay, thanks, on iOS and Android. Okay, um, what else, I mean?
Um, yeah, that's, uh, that's, that's for it, and also like, uh, yesterday. Um. Like, I, I got back working on the, uh, upgrading React Native, I picked up working on it. And since there was like, uh, it was like stale for a little bit, I had to, uh. I had to like rethink it with Dev, and there was some merge conflicts, because like a lot of code was added with my, uh, branch. So I did all of that, and, and when I was like about to, uh, open VR, um, something to PR. Because the PR was big, it's gonna be like, uh, pain to review it, it's been hard, this is just in that we like, have the PR in chunks, so it's gonna be like. Easier to review and also to test, so like, each, like, uh, we're gonna have in chunks and in chunk, we're gonna test it. And make sure things are good, then we go to the next part, uh, the next step, until we have like a stable. Uh, we, uh, last, like, uh, a React Native version. Uh, yeah, so that's what I was doing yesterday, uh, like, I had like three PRs. They're kind of like, uh, big PRs, but like, uh, organized. So, um, one is like for, uh, migrating. From the, uh, recall state mana- management we're using, because it's, it's, uh, it's not, it's not maintaining anymore than it, uh. Yeah, it's, it's, it's just dead, so I did that, uh, PR two, uh, and also like I did another, uh, PR for migration from. Uh, from the, uh, the fast image library we're using, because that one too is, uh. Uh, dead, not, not only that, but like it's not working in the new, uh, React Native, uh, I should take there. Uh, we changed that, we moved that to Expo Image. And also like another PR that I did is like for upgrading Lottie. To, um, to version, to the latest version, like I guess it's seven now. So, yeah, uh, so today I will be doing builds, so we can test all of those.
Well, what about, okay, so. With Lottie, the Lottie one, you already do, oh, you don't have a build yet, even in your?
No, no, that's, that's what I'm gonna be doing today. Give me a second, someone on my door, I'll be back right now. I'm back, uh, I was saying that today I will be doing builds. Um, in those builds, which is not, nothing really changed in, in how the app works and everything. It's just making sure things are, are still working, because like, those are big changes. Uh, the first one, it's like we changed the, uh, the statement management library, and that's how we handle. Logic and a lot of things, just we want to make sure, to make sure like we didn't break anything.
And we're gonna have like the whole Lottie upgrade, right?
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, that's the one that I wanted to, uh, test more, cuz like it's, uh. We're using now a different version, and maybe some Lotties, they're not gonna be animated as they are, or. Especially like in onboarding, because onboarding is a lot of Lotties, and things might look weird or not. Maybe as it is, so.
And the different expo photo handler?
Yeah, yeah, and about that one. The version that I did right now, it's like an older version, and it, it has an issue, it's like, um, it spikes the CPU. And, yeah, and it's gonna make the phone. It's gonna make the phone like heat, and the app feel slower, be slow, and I feel bad, be slower. And that's because I'm using an old version, because I'm, we're still using the old React Native version. Cuz things need to be in sync, uh, in terms of versioning, and, um, yeah, so. That, that one, I'm, I, I will not do a build for it right now, but I will just do a build like for, um. For the sta- state management change and for the Lottie, just to make sure. Things are good, then I can move to the next step to, uh, upgrade, uh, other libraries and. Move from, we move from library, I think we, we don't have it, in, like, there was only those three libraries that I needed to really move from them. The reason why we're moving from like them right now is because like, they're not supported in the latest React Native, so we, we need to, it's, uh, it's a mess. So, yeah, we, I'm gonna do a two builds today, to test, uh, the Lottie, and also to test like, uh. The safe management, and how you can test it, just like use the app as normally you do, and everything break or crashes. Then we can fix it before upgrading the React Native. We're doing this again, just like to. When we're gonna upgrade React Native, we're just gonna know what's the cause, because it's not like. It's not like because, oh, was it because of this library, or because now we did upgrade the React Native, it's just like, having things in chunks to, just to know when things break. We gotta know what's, what's really the cause of it, not just keep guessing.
Yeah. Okay, gotcha. So then, hopefully you'll get, be able to get a build, to build and, and actually function, that you can test all that.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought I had one more, oh, yeah, this, we're back to the Snapchat thing, so are we, are we good with, uh? We are good with the messaging, but as soon as we get approved, you're saying, then we can. Share into stories, it won't be a link, but it'll at least be sharing. Yeah. Okay, so you need the image, though, right? I don't know if we've worked on that at all.
It's already there, the image is there, like the badge image is already there, because like we, we had this before working, and the code was commented. And it was all, but like the image is, is there, like, I have, oh, I don't, yeah, I have a video shared, I can share it to you, just.
That's okay, no, I think we're gonna, we're gonna improve the image. And. So currently, if you were to tap, if you were trying to share, and not just badges, but like if you were. Like after I add a favorite, cuz remember, didn't you bring that logic back?
Yep, yep, both of that, yeah.
So if I try it and share it now to Snapchat, it won't open Snapchat?
Right now you won't open Snapchat, yeah.
Will the app crash, or what happens?
Nothing, nothing happens.
You just tap and nothing happens?
Yeah.
Okay. Then. Okay, so then, yeah, and then I do, we were, we're gonna update the. The, um, the image there too, Sean, Sean, tell if you worked, I think Lisa wanted to work on that, with you, did you guys work on that at all, like when you have to be favorite? It will share a favorite.
Yeah, we did, and, uh, we were working on it with Zane. Uh, there was a design that, uh, Lisa and I liked, and then I sent it to Zane. And he was like. I feel like we could do a better background, but then he didn't really give any other direction other than that. And then we were supposed to meet up, and then that didn't happen, so I don't.
We sent it to him?
Left off, yeah.
Okay, and then, let's re. Um, like redo, like, uh, rekindle this conversation. And, uh, get it back in front of Zane and Lisa. Did you have any other input besides the background, or like, did you like the rest of it?
He, he was very short with his response. Let's see exactly what it says. Uh, I think we can make the background more appealing.
Okay, maybe ask them, is there, is everything else good on it then?
Okay.
And then let me see it, and. We'll get that, so I mean, if we have different artwork for this, like if I share a favorite, is it pretty easy to swap out, like what, we could share?
Um, I know, like, we use Cloud Nary. I'm trying to find that template image we're using from Cloud Nary, um. Yeah, it's, here's it, I found it, let me. I need to control. So, yeah, um, so this is the share badge, like, let me share, um. Yeah, let me share with you. So this is the, um. The template, and like. On this template, we, uh, add some detail here, I guess the badge name and badge image.
This is for that, not the sharing of favorite.
This is for bad, I can find, sharing a favorite, how it looks like, give me a second, um. So, yeah, this is for, um. Favorite in a place, so we need something, I guess, yeah, I mean, yeah, we just look, need, um, a template. Cuz the other stuff, it goes as, um. As, it's, it's a dynamic, and there's some logic here that I'm seeing, it, that's how we, uh. Have the place name, the place image, and all of that.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not gonna be just like, uh, changing on image URL, but there's some code changes that I need to do. To have the new, uh, template to be working with our.
Okay, um. I remember, Sean told us sent me their first one, I remember this, Sean tell, and I had suggested a background as well, I suggested. I don't remember now, did it not get back to you? I had a good idea, and he was like, oh, yeah, that's a good idea. It wasn't the wood table, it was. Oh, I know what it was. It was the image blurred, so like. Potentially, like, let's say this one Bar West that was shared, perhaps we use the image for Bar West, but like, kind of blurred behind it. I think that's, I think that's what I suggested, let's see what that looks like.
Um, but still have the passport?
Yeah, everything else stays same.
Okay.
So, I mean, I just forwarded you. What we're kind of thinking about here, um, as a template, so the. Only thing that would be dynamic would be the name, we'll see where it says Bar West Midtown, well, I guess the date and city, so I guess all that. Could that information be dynamically inserted there?
Um. I will have, like, cuz like there's, um. I would say yes, because like, Cloud Nary gives you a way of how, it's just like. I think the front name, yeah, yeah, I will see, yes, just like, um. The issue gonna be like, what if the place name is long? Like, the location is long, it's gonna be not inside the. But Cloud Nary would not be able to, to know, cuz like this is an image, that, that's like.
Well, we can have a character limit.
That is, yeah, um.
So we'll do a character limit. Um, let me think. What else? Yeah, I guess that, that'd be the main question. Then.
I can find that for twenty characters, just like we have everywhere else.
Except that the name of the. Except that the name of the business. This isn't the name of the topic. Isn't, the name of the business could be very long. On a little stamp where it says Bar West Midtown.
Yeah, I I did it for twenty characters on that.
Okay.
When I designed it.
Okay, maybe we can make the stamp bigger. But we'll figure it out. We can make it a few more characters. So then, so I mean, you think you could get the date and city and whatnot in there?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I remember talking to him about this and he liked, he liked where it was going, just the background, we were thinking should be something more fun. But um not sure what yet. See how it looks with the image. That might not be great either. I don't know, we'll see. Let's try a few different options on the background, maybe even just gradient or something. Okay, so what would you need, I mean, for this, like a Figma design?
Yeah, Figma design, yeah, would be nice, or just like the template, which is the image with nothing inside the circle, or not like nothing, but like where the name, place name, it should be empty, the day is empty and also like the place empty, location empty.
Okay, and depending on the size of the phone screen, where will the text layout and what's, cause we're we're basically opening up the other, another app and embedding the image in there. How would that work? To get full screen?
To get full screen for what?
Well, this image is on my phone and it fits because I have a big phone, but what if I have a small phone? Where would the words? Like, you know what I mean, like would?
Yeah, I know, the the image, the whole thing resized because it's just a static image.
Okay, so I see. So the whole thing's, okay, it'll get bigger all across.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool. All right, well then um we'll get to Figma design. Now this one, um, I recall now, we were also gonna give this ability after a check in. What do we need to do on the front end for that to be possible and the back end?
Like to share this upside chicken?
Yeah.
That's all front end, that's uh like yeah, like it's yeah, like a user can be sharing it and when it's gonna be opening Snapchat or Instagram, you're gonna see this image, right?
Yeah.
So yeah, this is all front end, yeah.
Okay, well, I think we'll probably apply this for a check in as well. But um let's have you keep working on the React Native stuff, because they're already in it, so we can talk about this later.
Um, yeah, and also regarding uh stuff you uh messaged me about earlier, like before stand up, it's like the uh that countdown. Uh, I said like that would be easier if we just have that the blur inside the image itself. Maybe Shantel can help with an image from Figma.
Or the Lottie, maybe?
Yeah.
Cause I could have it behind, it has a background in the Lottie that might be.
Yeah, yeah, that would be really easy, like it would not be a lot of work for me to do. I'll just like swap the uh.
Okay, do I need a container size? Like, cause it seems like it's they're not, it's not centered inside that container.
Like the image?
The button member, it's like you have to put right margin.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I could just tell him to center the button inside of it. I suppose it will probably if we fit, if we have it fit the width, like it won't really matter. I guess I don't need necessarily like a I'll just use the same width we we usually use for a full screen and just use the same width, right?
Yep.
Okay, okay, I'll have him start working on that right now. Um, and you can make the that button look like it was pressed when you tap it.
Yeah, yeah, I did that, yeah.
Okay, cool. Okay, and I'm gonna swap out the next one, the next Lottie, because he's still the background is not fading in early enough, the white background. It looks weird like the the header is already appearing on the next one. So I I'm having him redo the next Lottie too, where it has like the clock and the white background. I'll get you that. Okay, um, what else? Anything else?
Yeah, that's that's all for me.
Okay, okay, cool. All right then, um. Let's see. So Jerry, did you uh? Anything new to report with those images?
Oh, I got it working. I just updated the URL to just like send a lower resolution.
Oh, okay. Is that a good long term fix or what what should we do?
Oh, the long term fix is, like I said, extract the image key and let the front end create transformations that it shows a thumbnail on the, in the chat thread and then when you tap it, it moves to full, full resolution.
Okay. I mean, these look fine to me. So are they lower resolution in the chat or lower resolution, even if I hit that like save button?
Both.
Okay. Okay. Now, should we lower all the resolutions? Like, because they are kind of slow to load.
I did for all of them that were uploaded in the past days in a topic. I'm gonna have to try to figure out what I can do to when the image is uploaded, I'm gonna run it, I should run a check and see if that image is um like past the size. Cause if I set everything to a fixed size, I could unintentionally scale stuff up that was smaller. So I'm gonna have to check the image and see if it's bigger than the allowed mega uh megabit pixel. And then if it is bigger, have to scale it down.
Okay, um, all right, we'll keep, yeah, keep investigating. Let's make sure we don't ever railroad ourselves where this chat is like too slow to load images and it's not useful, you know? Just keep on it, okay. All right, you know, let's see, um, okay, I need to get back to Brian on the animation and then I'm meeting Danny downtown. We got a meeting with the guys. Got some some businesses that probably be perfect fit for circles. So um, he's got some good ideas. So anyway, I'll be around, but um, I'm gonna drop off. If you guys need anything, just let me know.
I'll message you or you message me if something's going wrong with those. Oh, you already responded back to me, nice. Yeah, and then I'm gonna work on giving you those image keys to Smail for the uh thumbnails.
Okay, cool, sounds good.
Okay, great. All right, thanks everybody. Talk to you later.